Welcome everyone to the January 3, 2022 Select Board Meeting. This is Zoom meeting. Uh, let's have a call to order.
So roll call, Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Ms. Bates.
President.
Mr. Dane.
I present.
Uh, Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
All right, great. And now we'll go to the consent count.
Okay, move to approve the, just a second. Move to prove the consent calendar with the exception of the town accountant warrant of January 6th is written in the agenda. Wait, so that means that the consent agenda consists of the gift acceptance, the donation by John Fisk of $14,000 to the council on aging. And the minutes of October 25th, 2021, November 8th, 2021, and November 15th, 2021.
Second.
Um, but I'd actually like to propose one edit to the minutes of November 8th. Actually, for an issue originally raised by Henry Dane. Um, in his review of the minutes, he wanted to add a clarification. That the, uh, the not to exceed. Number, the rationale for the not to exceed number. And so, um, on page, I'm just finding it on page eight of those minutes at the top where it said, um. Mr. Dane reiterated his desire to have the verbiage not in excess of, and then the sentence stops there. I would say that instead, to extend that sentence to say, uh, not in excess of, to prevent. The author is authorized amount for being increased by amendments on the town floor, on the, on the, on the town, special town meeting floor above the amount written in the warrant. In other words, to clarify why he wanted this to be not an exercise.
All right, um, what page is that again?
It's page eight of the, of those minutes. Uh, first paragraph.
Any other discussion?
Susan had her hand up.
Um, I just, I sent this to you, but it was, you know, not.
Galper, yes.
Okay.
So change, correct the spelling of Galper. To G A L P E R, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so those two amendments to the, uh, consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, and thank you to Mr. Fisk for that generous donation to the council on aging. Very much appreciated. We will now move to the swearing in of our interim town manager. I see that Carrie has survived her first day on the job and still, uh, walking around in one piece and, and that's great. And I see also that Kari is looking good. Thank, thank you, Kari, for coming tonight. Um, so if you want to do the swearing in, it's too bad. We were planning to do this in person and we had to switch to a Zoom meeting, but.
Gladly. Carrie, if you would raise your right hand. Do you, Carrie LaFleur solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent on you as town manager of the town of Concord according to the best of your abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the constitution, the laws of the Commonwealth, and the bylaws of the town of Concord? Keeping uppermost in your mind what is best for the town of Concord? I do. Thank you.
Hey. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you, Kari. And we will go right away to the town manager's report.
Thank you and good evening. I did send out a town manager's report very late in the day and I apologize for that. Going forward, we will have these prepared in time for distribution with the packet. So I wanted to provide some updates to you on the status of the pandemic. We had a special testing clinic yesterday to prepare for the school opening. We had a testing capacity of 200 and we had over 100 people who came for testing. So that was very successful. And I heard from a couple of people that actually participated that the process was great. People were only waiting in line for very short periods of time. One person said to me, five minutes and received her test results at 6:00 AM this morning. So that was a very successful event. We have a vaccination clinic scheduled for January 6th from 4:00 to 9:00 PM at the high school. The, and this is for ages five and up. There is a registration link that is available online to register to participate in the clinic. As you know, last week, the board of health issued a mask mandate for all indoor spaces. And there is information on the town's website about the mandate. Our case count, we had 170 positive cases last week, bringing the total for the month of December to 324. Now, this does not include home testing. And we are told that if you were to add in the tests from individuals who are doing these at home, that the numbers would probably double. The town has purchased 2,000 rapid antigen tests through a, an initiative sponsored by the state. We are expecting to receive these tests tomorrow. Um, and we are planning for the use of these tests. But at this point in time, we're not, we're not likely to just be issuing them to the general public, but have them in reserve for people who need them. Um, and there'll be more information coming out probably next week on that. I also would like to note that in terms of our town staff, we do have a number of positive cases. But we'd like to assure the public that we are open for business. And, um, we do not have any changes in our service hours at this time, and we don't expect any with one exception, and that's the library, and I will mention that in a moment. I wanted to comment on the power outage yesterday. We had an outage that began at about 4:00 PM. We had about 756 customers impacted. Uh, the area impacted was the, the CMLP substation at Main Street across Route 2 into West Concord to the 7-Eleven convenience store. The cause of the outage was a failure in the, in an underground line. A majority of the customers were, were restored within a few hours and all customers had their service restored as of 12:30 AM today. We had a very busy weekend in Public Works. Yesterday, we had three different events going. We had a water main service leak on Comerford Road. Residents were temporarily without service for several hours. I put a note in the report that on an annual basis, um, this type of situation occurs about a dozen times. So this is, it's not a regular occurrence. And it was just unfortunate that everything happened this weekend because our, our crews were very busy. We also had a sewer backup on Stowe Street near the Emerson Umbrella. This happens about three times a year, so even more frequent, but again, the same weekend that we had so many other things going. The acid at pump station was on backup generator yesterday because of the outage at CMLP. And this week, the keep, the completion of the Inert Snack Reservoir Rehab Project is complete and the reservoir will be refilled this week. And we're not expecting any service interruption. Um, I mentioned the library. We are looking at a temporary reduction in hours of service. And we will have additional information coming out maybe as soon as tomorrow. But we are, we are looking at reducing evening hours slightly because of our ability to staff the library because of positive cases amongst the staff. The children's library is scheduled to open this Wednesday and we are planning to move forward with that. It's a lot of interest in families getting into that space and we've had to postpone the, the opening of that twice. So we're looking to move forward and we will be limiting capacity in order to keep people safe. And then finally, uh, 2022 marks the 150th anniversary of the Concord Police Department. In 1872, the community and select board recognized the need for a full-time police officer after a violent incident in town. Edwin Smith was the first police officer for the town of Concord. And the department grew substantially into the early 1900s with full-time officers supported by special officers. The department eventually moved away from special officers to a, a full-time professional police department that we have today. This year, in commemoration of the department's sesquicentennial, all sworn officers will be issued commemorative badges to be worn throughout the year. Officer Greg Mayu and the Police Relief Association are to be commended for their work in securing these commemorative badges. Thank you. I think they threw some words in there to test my ability, so.
Okay, well, I think you did great with that. Welcome again. Thank you for that. Stepping up at the last minute to produce a report. That was really informative and do, are there questions from the board? Linda?
Thank you, Carrie, so much. Um, I'm, I'm just, given the situation with COVID, I'm just wondering if at our next select board meeting, you could give us some, uh, status report on recruiting the replacement for the public health director position? Thank you.
I can do that and, um, I, I think there, there may have been some questions. I did want to report that Marsha Rasmussen is serving as the health director at this time. And we expect within the next two weeks that we would have an interim health director announcement, but I, I would be happy to provide an update at the next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Susan?
Yes, um, thank you, Carrie, for your report. I've been, it's been on my mind that we have this January 20th. Town meeting and I'm wondering what the thinking is given the COVID situation. I know it's posted in the locations identified, but what's the conversation around that?
So the, the moderator has been in discussion with town council about the mask mandate and how that will impact the, the, the special town meeting. I believe we have a meeting scheduled this week. And the, don't have the, the exact date off the top of my head, but we do something scheduled this week to talk about how, how to proceed with special town meeting, meeting, given the state of the situation.
Thank you. But it will have to be an in-person meeting by state law. So the only question is how to enforce the mask mandate? And how to have the social distancing and, and the logistics? And I think that Carmen talked about having three different rooms set up at the high school so that there could be plenty of distance.
Thank you.
Other questions for the interim town manager? All right, seeing none. Um, so we look forward to working with you, Carrie. Congratulations and condolences, as they say. Select board meetings are going to be held by Zoom, um, until further notice. So once this surge passes, we will start meeting live and hybrid again. But right now, we're gonna continue on Zoom for a while until further notice. Um. Okay, there's some scheduling changes for some upcoming select board meetings. We were scheduled to meet next Monday, January 10th for a focused meeting. I think we're going to cancel that. We are not ready with that topic yet. And instead, if everybody's available, we would like to have a focus meeting on January 31st to discuss ARPA and the infrastructure bill. Is there any board member who cannot make it on the 31st? Excellent. Okay. And then in February, I think our focus meeting will probably be on code of conduct, which we're going to talk about a little bit later on tonight. And in March, the transportation committee will be, um, giving recommendations and hosting a forum at our focused meeting. As Susan mentioned, our special town meeting is January 20th. That's a Sunday. No, yes, it's a Sunday, right? Am I right? Or?
Thursday.
Thursday, a Thursday. Sorry about that. At, at 7:00 PM, right? It's at 7:00 PM. So, um, the select board should, um, we should meet at 6:30 PM at the high school. Um, in case anything comes up, we can have a little meeting before. Also, this Saturday at 9:00 AM, we will be having a annual town meeting preview meeting from about nine to 11 or 12. Everyone is invited, especially if you plan to, um, bring an article to town meeting, you should plan to attend. And Carrie, I believe we're still going forward with this meeting, um, in person. Is that correct?
Um, I think that is the subject of a meeting tomorrow afternoon, whether it is in-person, hybrid, or Zoom.
Okay, stay tuned. We have to adjust that. Okay. And finally, I want to talk about, um, that, uh, construction is occurring at White Pond and the area has been fenced off. This is a common practice in many, if not all, construction areas in the interest of public safety. So we ask citizens, please stay away from this fenced area and, um, respect the site for your safety and the safety of others. Matt, I saw your hand up. Did you have a question?
Uh, you answered my question, which was going to be about the town preview, meeting preview meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, we now move on to an update from the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And I see Keith Bergman is here. Hi, Keith.
Hi, Terry. Hello, everyone. Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, and while we are not posted, uh, we are at your public meeting and my fellow members, Liz, Linda Escobedo and Mike Lawson were on the call and I see that we're also supported, uh, by, in addition to, to, to Carrie, who can answer the numbers questions that come up, uh, also Liz Rust and Marsha Rasmussen for some of the subjects that we may talk about. So, um, I appreciate the, the time on tonight's agenda. Uh, the, the committee is asking for your vote on one item, uh, but we would like to brief you on three others as time permits. Uh, and these are all covered in the memo that's in your packet. The first item is, um, is, uh, has to do with a condominium, uh, reuse as an affordable unit that you approved back on, um, June 1st for $570,000 for, uh, 100 Elm Brook, uh, which, uh, the owner has decided not to proceed with. So the Affordable Housing Trust was approached by, uh, the Concord Housing Development Corporation, who was the applicant for the $570,000. And they were seeking to, uh, CHDC is seeking to essentially decommit that 570,000. And since, uh, the select board's policy vote of December 6th, which essentially transferred the balance of the affordable, uh, housing articles, uh, into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, since your vote, uh, specified that, that, that transfer would be subject to any funding commitments that may have been made by the select board or town manager prior to that December 6th vote. Uh, we wanted to come back to you and we felt we needed to come back to you for your policy approval, uh, to, uh, to approve that decommitting and we're, uh, would ask, uh, our, our board voted to recommend that you rescind your vote of, uh, of June 1st, committing that $570,000. Liz Rust is, is here. Uh, I don't know if Lee, you know, see Lee on the, uh, Smith on the, the call tonight, but Liz could answer any questions that you may have about that project.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Are there some questions from the board? Susan?
Hi, thank you, Keith. I just wanted to clarify. So the, the resident who's currently in that property is staying there. Is that what's happening?
Yes.
Thanks.
Keith, I have a question. Um, does money go back to, um, the Affordable Housing Trust?
That, that, I, I, I would say that's a, a question for Carrie. Uh, it would be my understanding that if the, those article balances were moved into the trust fund, then I, then I would think the return of these monies would be returned to the trust also, but I defer to Carrie on how that works. Whether it's an article balance or a trust fund balance.
Okay, and I see Liz had her hand up about that too. So either Carrie or Liz, whoever wants to take that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just chime in and then Carrie, can I chime in also? Um, these, these monies were transferred to the trust with the whole, with all the other ones and it was transferred with this commitment. So it's, I think it's a million two, you know, and some change there that were transferred, which included the 570. So it's really just the monies are already there in the trust, uh, transfer. So it's just, it's just the release of the commitment.
Ah, okay. So we're not actually transferring money. We're, we're taking away an encumbrance. Okay. Matt?
But was our ju, vote in June to transfer the funds from free cash at that time?
So town, town meeting has made separate free cash appropriations for affordable housing. Um, the, this particular commitment was charged to Article 14 of the 2020 town meeting, the full 500,000 that was appropriated. And then 70,000 was charged to, against Article 17 of the 2021 town meeting. Uh, but town meeting appropriated these funds for affordable housing. So if is, if the question is, does it go back to free cash or the trust? It would go to the trust because the intention was that once the trust was established, that the balances that were appropriated by town meeting would be transferred to the trust.
Yeah, but my question is more whether we would rescind our vote that we took to transfer money, the 570 from free cash at that time. Or was our vote, so I'm just trying to find the record of that vote to try to understand, you know, what the wording was, but you know, if we're making a motion to rescind, it should reflect the motion we took.
Linda?
So, um, I believe the commitment at the time was made against the appro, affordable housing appropriation. Not, not against free cash, not against free cash, because town meeting, two, as Carrie explained, two town meetings had already to, um, approve that money as appropriation for affordable housing.
Right, so that makes sense to me. So let me see if I can explain it. First, the money was in free cash. Town meeting transferred it to, uh, under these two articles that Carrie, uh, talked about. We moved money each year, 500,000 from free cash into, um, an affordable housing pot. It wasn't called the trust yet at that point, I guess. So I know, Matt, that our initial draft motion said from free cash, but I think that's incorrect now. I think it was already appropriated by these articles.
Well, in fact, I've just found the minutes.
Nice.
So there's no reference to where the money came from. It's just a commit of this, uh, money to CHDC to acquire renovate and sell.
So perhaps we don't have to even rescind the vote. We just want to, um, rescind an encumbrance. That's how we want to handle it. Carrie, what do you recommend for our?
I, I think that, well, so I don't know if it's time yet to give a trial, uh, uh, motion here.
Sure. Unless people have questions? Okay.
Um, and of course, now I just lost my window, so where it was. Oh, gosh. I'm sorry.
Oh, while you're looking, I did see Keith had his hand up. Keith, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to, uh, clarify. Looks like my video is, uh, frozen. I just wanted to clarify that, of course, it would be town meeting that voted to, uh, have free cash be the funding source for an article. And that all the select board could do is to, uh, vote to, uh, spend money from an article. So it's, if it came out of the article and, and it, it goes back, or if you moved all of that money as you're authorized to do under the town meeting vote into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's what you did on December 6th, move it into the trust fund, you can go back to the trust fund, I think.
Yeah, so here's my suggested motion, or perhaps I should just make it. So move to rescind the select board's June 1st, 2021 vote to commit $570,000 to buy down a unit located at 100 Elm Brook and return the $570,000 commitment to the municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Thank you for that clarification, Keith. I think that was helpful. Uh, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Great. All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
If you want to continue, Keith?
Sure. Uh, next, next item that we wanted to bring, uh, to you for, uh, discussion is, um, that, uh, the, since the, 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 well, the, the, in, in our discussion at the, uh, Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, uh, board meeting, uh, we discussed whether to request an article for this upcoming town meeting. And the, uh, the sense of our meeting was that since the select board has for the last three years inserted an article requesting, uh, $500,000 from free cash to fund affordable housing, that, uh, we wanted to request that you do that again for, uh, 2022 and this time specify that the money goes into the trust. Uh, the larger, uh, part of that, uh, discussion is that we recognize and have been told that, you know, free cash isn't always going to be, uh, uh, a reliable funding source year in, year out for the trust. But we're also aware that the, uh, main, uh, engines, uh, that were to, uh, uh, keep the trust going, uh, haven't come to pass yet. And that is the Home Rule Petition for, uh, the, uh, real estate transfer fee or the, uh, uh, building, uh, permit, uh, surcharge. So in light of So in light of those circumstances, we feel that we need to have a discussion. There needs to be a discussion about looking at alternative or additional funding sources for the, for the trust in the, in the short term and certainly in the long term. And, and we're, we're just starting that discussion, but we wanted to share with you that we understand that, you know, times, times are tight. But we also know that in order for the trust to be able to act quickly when opportunities arise to, to meet affordable housing needs, we need, we need money in the fund in order to act quickly. So that's, that's sort of where we're, where we're at right now. We have not identified what additional funding sources we might look at, if, whether there are other local funds or, or or state or federal funds or mitigation funds from that might be available through the development process or, or something to put money in the fund. But we wanted to have a, a larger discussion about, about that and to let you know about it.
How much, how much money is in the trust now?
By, by my count, based on your vote tonight, there is 1.1 million in the trust. And if we, and we would be down to about 750,000 when we act on an application in front of us now for, for funds for the Asabet Bluff Upland Road land acquisition project.
Keith, just to clarify, 1.1 million, does that include the 570,000 that's going back in there now? Linda's nodding yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to comment that I very much appreciate your committee looking carefully at alternative sources. I know it's been looked at before and it's very difficult. But the fact that you're going to continue to do so because times are tough with free cash, that's very important. The legislative delegation, when we met with them, is not particularly optimistic that we're going to get action quickly on, on some of our petition articles. So that's unfortunate. And I really appreciate you looking at the alternative sources. Do other Board members have questions or comments? Okay. Go ahead, Carrie.
I'd like to just make a comment about free cash because we have some newer information and this will be new even to my Finance Committee members who are on the call. So we had originally estimated we would have about 8.5 million dollars in free cash. And while we don't have free cash certified yet, we're now estimating that it's likely closer to 7.5 million dollars. And the reason for this is there were some very late encumbrances at the Concord Public Schools that we had not necessarily anticipated. And so our fiscal '23 budget right now assumes that we will use a million dollars to reduce property taxes as we typically do. The Finance Committee will be putting a request forward for 500,000 for Middle School Stabilization Fund. If you take those two items into account, we're at about 5%. So the bottom threshold for free cash. It is possible that we may be able to make some additional revenue assumptions. We had a new, a new meals tax, really meals tax receipt come in today that looked to be higher than what I had expected. So it's possible that we could assume half a million dollars for property tax, which would potentially provide a half a million dollars for affordable housing. But I would have to advise against a million for property tax relief, a half million for Middle School Stabilization Fund and a half million for affordable housing all in one year because that would put us below the 5%, which really is the, the minimum standard for AAA credit.
Okay, well, not great news that we want to hear, but thank you for the update. Need to kept up to date on this. Hey.
And, and we'll work that much harder in trying to identify other funding sources, so.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is the Upland Road Land Acquisition Project. Just to let you know that we have met on a couple of occasions with the Concord Housing Development Corporation about, about that land acquisition. And, and from our discussions, we're focusing on five affordable units coming for the housing component of that property purchase, which is for housing and open space. And I defer to Liz if she wants to briefly give a summary of where that stands. But I will say that there is a deposit that's required by the seller in, in the short term, which is $140,000 total. The Housing Trust has been asked to cover $50,000 of that. And we felt that it was certainly in the category of, of something that would not admit of delay. We want to preserve the, the ability of, for, for the property to be purchased and that the main funding event would occur at Town Meeting when, when there is also community preservation funding sought. And we've also, in addition to the $50,000, we're also being asked for a remaining sum of $400,000. We did take a policy vote in favor of the project and have thus far voted to approve the $50,000 for, for, for the deposit. And maybe, I don't know, Liz has any more to add to that? Thank you.
Sure, I, I can, thank you, Keith. I think that that was a great status and that really covers all the bases. I just wanted to note that Marcia Rasmussen and, and her staff, Delia, have been working so hard on this and have really significantly advanced the project and have been able to, you know, bring the partners together and prepare, prepare a plan that seems to meet everyone's approval. So now some of the details can be worked out. So we think that it's taken maybe five or six different conceptual site plans. But I think that's really buttoning down so that, as I mentioned, that some of the details could be worked out. And a draft memorandum of understanding is prepared by Lee Smith of the CHDC with the other funding partners to, to try to, as I say, sort of button up some of those details. So things are really progressing.
I have a.
Hold on a minute, Henry. Matt has his hand up and then you can go next.
Yeah, so I'm surprised to hear the number five for the units. I thought that even by right, six units could be put there, you know, in a subdivision plan. And then that's, of course, not even taking into account PRDs and the like. Why such a small number?
I, I, I will respond to that. So I think that there was a desire to preserve more open space than some of those prior housing plans had indicated. And so the housing portion has been reduced to just about an acre from almost six acres, though a survey will really confirm the total acreage and, and size of the properties. And with that, shifts in the contribution from open space and housing have also been made. So while there was a potential to, to develop more housing, I think that five units is, is a great addition to Concord's affordable housing inventory. And it seems to be, you know, a conceptual site plan that, that seems to work for everybody. So that would be using the, the existing property, the existing structure building for two units with some renovations, as well as three new units of housing, looking at perhaps a duplex and a single there with an entrance off of Old Marlboro. And that's the concept now. I see Marcia's here on her video and so she can chime in with further details.
Well, I, I just, because they're going to be 100% affordable, rather than some market rate to offset the costs of construction, the smaller projects seem to make sense. This is comparable to what was done at the Berkland when Concord Housing Trust created a triplex behind an existing house on Old Bedford Road. And the Housing Authority built two duplexes on a small piece of land associated with the Amendalia land, and that was acquired by the town. So this, in, in view of the concerns that were being raised by neighbors and residents in the area, I felt that it would be important to scale back what was being requested because of concerns that we could not address at this point in time regarding traffic impacts and some of the other issues that were being raised.
I guess I just raise it because, you know, land is the hardest thing in affordable housing, just having sites. And, you know, this is a great opportunity that there's a site available. And so I, I just am a little disappointed that, that yield of, of units. I mean, I understand some of the, the neighborhood concerns, but, you know, even, I mean, five units is a very small impact, I think. And that, I, I just seem to me that even if, if by right, construction would have resulted in six, it seems unusual that we would go for fewer. But that's all.
Okay, Henry?
I, my first question is with regard to the $140,000 deposit. What are the terms of that deposit? Under what circumstances would it be refunded or returned to us? Or is that a non-refundable deposit, which is committed regardless of whether the town goes through with the project? I would, we, I think, before I would vote for putting money up for a deposit, I certainly would want to see the terms of the agreement under which the deposit was being held. My second.
Okay, let's take that one at a time. Liz, go ahead.
From the beginning, it's always been agreed that the deposit is 100% refundable if the town is not able to fund the purchase.
Does that mean if the town does not vote the money to buy the land, the $140,000 comes back?
That's correct.
And that would be subject to the, an agreement with the, the owner of the property at the time the deposit was transferred to the owner?
That's correct.
My second question is, are these going to be rental units or are they going to be home ownership units?
I think that the existing two units are rental and that, that building is well set up for rental. So I think it's still open. It could be a mix of rental and homeownership or it could be all homeownership.
All right. Based on, I mean, I guess it probably doesn't make that much difference. But in essence, what we're doing here is paying close to $2 million for this land. And however you divide up the source of the money, since a good portion of the land is already subject to restrictions under the Wetlands Protection Act and so on. And the majority of the land is not going to be used for, for the construction. What you're really paying for here is about $400,000 per, for the land per unit. And if, I, I, this is just my, you know, this is just the way I see it. I don't know whether you're going to agree with me, but we're paying $2 million to get enough land to buy, to build five units of affordable housing. If it costs us a similar amount to build that housing to what we paid for the, or what we're committed to pay for the, the two-bedroom house on Commonwealth Avenue at $700 a square foot, so that the cost of the unit of housing with two bedrooms was 700,000. And I don't know why this would be any different if the town is behind it all. We're going to be paying over a million dollars per unit for affordable housing, which seems to be a questionable proposition.
Okay, let's let Liz respond to that.
So I think that the purchase price is 2.8 million. And the current configuration between the housing and open space is a million dollars for the housing parcel and 1.8 million for the open space parcel. So that would be the, the, where to start for that. So in the other part I would mention is the Commonwealth Avenue estimate was done using the public procurement requirements, which we know drives up construction by 40%. And also done, of course, in this time of COVID construction, which we know the construction estimates are very high. So the housing here, as the CHDC is not subject to public procurement, would be less. And the CHDC would RFP it out to a private developer under the Development Services Agreement. So what is built is exactly what, what is envisioned. And so that those same procurement and construction laws wouldn't apply. So it wouldn't be the same calculus. Additionally, there is already a building on the property with two units. So that would change those development numbers too. So those are just other considerations to the points that you bring up, Mr. Dane.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to follow up on that and then we'll, I see Matt has another question after that. So what do you think then if it's $1 million for the housing land and we have five units? Is that 200,000 per unit for the land? And if that's right, then what, what do you think the total cost per unit will be approximately by the time we get done with construction? Might it be 500 or? And the reason I'm asking is because I do agree with Henry and I think the Board voted not to support. So, so I wanted to get a general idea. You know, I see Marcia kind of shaking her head. Maybe you don't know yet, but maybe a ballpark.
I think through the procurement process that Liz was talking about, we will find out. We have no idea at this point in time. We don't know whether the existing two-family is going to need significant renovations or not. And we don't know yet who, how we're going to structure the construction. It could be through Habitat for Humanity or it could be a nonprofit affordable housing group that is interested in doing it. Well, in the case of Junction Village, the CHDC sought a number of proposals that varied dramatically. Now here we have a discreet number that we will be seeking input on, but it could be for rental. It could be the Housing Authority decides, golly, we have this source of funds. We could build the three units. It will, it may be really high. Or we could go through a different group and, and bring in a nonprofit affordable housing group that could do this. So we, we really don't know, especially given the current construction market.
Okay. Let me just finish with my follow-up. So am I correct, though, that the land cost for the affordable housing, if it's 1 million, do I divide that by the five units? Is it about 200,000 per unit? Is, is that calculation right or not?
Yes, if, if, you know, the, the five units are on paper now, so until, you know, a definitive plan. I just would add that the housing parcel is marketable by itself. So, you know, that there's, so, you know, if things don't work out, there is a, there is a scenario where you, you do have a viable, marketable piece of property. you know, that there's, so, you know, if things don't work out, there is a, there is a scenario where, um, you, you do have a viable, marketable piece of property.
Okay. All right, I see that Matt has his hand up.
Yeah, so, I mean, it seems like the better way to think of this is it's a buy down of a duplex plus a project to build three units of affordable housing. I mean, that's, that's really what's going on here. And so if you think about, you know, what the cost for the buy down is, and especially since it's a car valuable lot, we can kind of understand what the economics of that are. And then you can look at the cost per unit of the, of the residual land for supporting that, that three-unit new construction.
Yep.
But, you know, it, it's again, it's a little tricky, just given the very low unit count to try to make those numbers work well.
Right.
I mean, that's what we saw at your row, the most extreme case, of course, a tiny house and just one. And, you know, and public uh, procurement that it just was a perfect storm of cost, but this isn't a, a clear blue sky of construction scenario either for affordable housing.
And are you
It's market rate land and, uh, you know, market rate construction.
So you'll be coming to town meeting in, on May 1st with, with this article is under CPC, is that correct?
That is correct.
And by then will we have some more data on what the construction costs may be?
Um, we understand that's an open question.
Okay. All right, are there questions from Linda or Susan? And Carrie, do you have anything to add?
I, no, I don't, not at this time.
All right, I see one question, uh, from the public that I'll take, Diane Proctor.
Thank you very much, Terry. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. My understanding is that this article, while being supported perhaps by the CPC final votes have not been made there, would actually be pulled out of the CPC warrant article and be presented in the, in, in it together as a town warrant article. Um, so it will really not be part of the CPC, but would be part of an independent warrant article, just to, just for clarification, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. All right, um, and Keith, if you would like to go on to the fourth part.
Uh, sure, thanks very much. And, and just to, just to let you know that we will be back hopefully within a month or so at your, at your convenience, but, uh, for the last, uh, uh, for the last, uh, a couple of months, we've been, uh, conducting a series of meetings with other housing stakeholders. Uh, and we're still doing, uh, joint meetings. And what we're trying to do is to develop written guidelines, uh, for the trust, which would be subject to your approval with the, that under our, under our bylaw. Um, uh, as we've, as we've seen before, we've come back to you for approval of statements, that there is something uh, in the bylaw which, uh, requires select board approval for, uh, our, um, policy goals and statements consistent with the town's adopted housing goals, uh, which would serve as guidelines for the trust. And, uh, we are, uh, we're envisioning that ultimately that's going to be a two-step process. We're going to have something that's in place initially. Uh, uh, under the current, uh, funding structure, uh, uh, and for the longer term, uh, in the event that there are, um, additional funding sources, uh, how would that work? And the intervening, um, uh, activity, uh, we hope will be the, um, development, the updating of the housing production plan. Uh, once the 2020 census figures are out to, uh, to inform that process. Um, so, so for now, we're looking at, uh, at, at, uh, bringing you rather a, a short uh, version of, of guidelines, but, uh, to tide us over for a while, but ultimately after the development of the housing production plan, uh, later this year, uh, we, we understand we, we would be back, uh, to, to make sure that our guidelines reflect that up-to-date document.
Okay, very good. And, and what is the timing of the housing production plan?
Might be a Marcia question.
I guess if Marcia, oh, there she is, okay.
Sorry about that. Um, Liz Rust and I have prepared a, a draft charge, which we will be forward to, forwarding to you for your approval and for staffing. Um, once we have a steering committee, uh, we do have the consultant on board. We have the Regional Housing Services Office on board. And we're ready to get started. So, um, anticipating that this will be, um, the, a final draft will be ready for you, um, this, probably this summer and then finalize come September for submittal to, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, so I think I heard you say that you're, you're drafting it and you're going to be back to the, you're, you're drafting the plan for it. And you're going to come back to this.
I'm drafting a charge for a steering committee. A housing plant, the, the, the Plan Production Plan Steering Committee. Um, and then we'll seek the select board's input on staffing or, or appointing people to that steering committee. Working with the steering committee, they will work with the consultant to develop some outreach. We will develop, um, a series of, um, needs assessment based on old census information and then provide an update as soon as we get that new information. So uh, it will be a, a sort of a delicate balancing act, but we're going to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Are there, uh, Liz, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that the census data, because it came up a few times in this conversation. Um, there's no firm date, but it could be as late as September or October.
Okay, and when do you anticipate coming to the select board for approval of the charge? Is that something in about one month or is that something like in some September?
Oh, the, the charge, uh, soon, like, like next week.
Yeah, yeah.
The charge will be ready for your review, uh, probably by the end of this week.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that. Any other questions for Keith? And Mike Lawson, Marcia, Liz, and whoever else is here from the Housing Affordable Trust Committee? Okay, I don't see any, but we wish to thank you. This is a very complex and, um, important work that you're doing and we really appreciate all the work that you're doing on all of these projects. Thank you.
Thanks so much and thanks for your time tonight. And thanks, I appreciate the staff support very much.
Okay, we'll be seeing you again soon, I guess.
You bet. Thank you.
Now, we will move on to reviewing the Finance Department Plan.
Good evening again. Uh, there is information available in your package on plan, and I will briefly or review that briefly with you now. The Finance Department is, consists of five divisions. I've identified the divisions and, and given you a little bit of background about each one of, what each one of them do. Accounting, assessing, budgeting, and purchasing, finance administration, and treasurer-collector. So my proposal is that on an interim basis, the role of Chief Financial Officer will be split into two components. Interim Treasurer-Collector and the balance of the duties, which I'm, I'm just titling interim Finance Director for lack of a, a better term. On an interim basis, um, my recommendation to the select board is the appointment of our current Deputy Treasurer-Collector, Colleen Reinhardt. Um, Colleen has been employed by the town for about eight years, serving in the positions of Collections Assistant, Treasury Assistant, and now Deputy Treasurer-Collector. While she's only been recently promoted to the position of Deputy, she effectively managed the division's operations since the retirement of the former deputy in September of 2020, until her recent appointment. She is fully capable of assuming the additional duties of the Treasurer-Collector and is, um, very enthusiastically looking forward to assuming the role. So under the Charter, Section 2D1, the town manager's appointment of a Treasurer-Collector is subject to the approval by the select board. So this is, this is something that may be, um, news to you, but there are a handful of statutory positions that are required, that under the Charter require the approval of the select board. Well, while most appointments to employment with the town are just made by the town manager, there are certain ones, including this, that require approval of the select board. Um, and so by extension, my assumption then is that an interim Treasurer-Collector would also be required to be appointed by the select board. I'm not asking you to take this item up this evening. Um, I would like to schedule this for your next meeting on January 24th. Between now and the 24th, I have appointed Colleen Reinhardt as the Acting Treasurer-Collector. My appointment as Chief Financial Officer, including the Treasurer-Collector position, has not been rescinded yet. And so I believe I'm able to make this acting appointment and then ask on the 24th that you take up the interim, interim appointment, which I believe would mean that my appointment as CFO slash Treasurer-Collector should be, um, rescinded for the period of January 24th through the end of the fiscal year. The second piece of that is the interim Finance Director. We are currently recruiting for this position. Uh, we have it advertised in several places, including the Mass Municipal Association, the State Government Finance Association. And the announcement has been distributed to three government search firms and one agency that specializes in place, temporary placements for government positions. The position is open until filled, and I'm hoping next week to be able to interview candidates for the position. We currently have two. So that is encouraging. This obviously is going to have a limited, a limited candidate pool because it's a short-term assignment as, as proposed, but I can tell you I'm very encouraged by the two candidates that we have. And for the, for the interim, or for the, for the period of January 1st to the 24th, I have appointed John Harris as the Acting Finance Director. He is currently the Budget and Purchasing Manager, has worked for the town in excess of, of 20 years. You may or may not know him. He's sort of a back office person, but he's been around a lot and is very involved in, in preparing the budgets, general fund and enterprise, and our capital improvement plans, as well as managing and overseeing all of our procurements. Um, I have included for the boards and committees that as CFO I, I work directly with, I've identified who would pick up the assignment in the interim period of time. Um, and then also made a note about the assessor. So obviously you know our long-term assessor left employment with the town in October. We have an interim assessor at this point in time. He is a part-time retired assessor. He's doing a fabulous job. Us help, helped bring us through the, um, the val- the value approval for the department at the Department of Revenue. Um, our classification hearing, our tax recap process, he's done a great job. He's interested and available in a long-term interim position, but he is retired. So he's part-time. So we, we do have that vacancy. And we will be working with the Board of Assessors later this month to talk about how we might proceed with filling that position. So that, that is the plan, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Questions from the board? Uh, Linda and then Henry.
Um, thank you, Carrie, for that. And, um, I, I noticed in your report, you already indicated that, um, some available funds for a part-time position that you're not filling will be, um, otherwise directed to the interim position, Finance Director position, is that correct?
Yes, I, I believe we have sufficient funding within the department budget to accommodate, uh, these appointments.
Yeah. And then the only other thing I wasn't quite tracking, um, when you, um, said that would rescind your role as treasurer through the end of the fiscal year? Fiscal year or, or did you say calendar year?
Um, I, I meant fiscal year. I, I hope that's what I
Okay, okay, thank you.
My interim contract right now is through June 30th. And so we, we would tie any rescission of my prior appointments with that, that contract.
Certainly makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Henry?
I- is there any reason that we should not vote to approve the appointments? Um, that the, uh, interim town manager has proposed to us in her memorandum tonight? Instead of putting it off for, I think our next meeting will not be for two weeks. And is there any reason to delay these appointments?
So I, I would say that it's probably not properly noticed on your agenda. Um, when we put the agenda together, I was not necessarily thinking that the select board would need to approve these appointments. But probably shortly after the agenda was posted, it dawned on me that, that the select board, these are a handful of appointments that the select board actually does need to approve. So there isn't any work that can't be accomplished in the next two weeks by an acting versus an interim person. So we're, we're not in any jeopardy of not being able to do anything that we would otherwise do. And I would rather wait and make sure it's properly noticed uh, and, and proceed that way.
No, thank you. I, I wonder off if there was something else you could do for us at the, our next meeting, uh, which is to provide the board with a, 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 a comprehensive list of the vacant positions that are either unfilled at this point or which are in the process of being filled, but not have, have not been filled yet.
And, and that would be across the town?
Across the town, yes.
Certainly, we do have that available for budgeting purposes and we could provide that.
Good, thank you.
Okay. We appreciate, um, you having a plan so early. And we understand, Carrie, this is your first business day on the job officially, although I know you were working all weekend and even last week. So having this plan so early is, is excellent. Are there some other questions or comments from the board? Okay, then we'll look forward to, um, next meeting, uh, being able to approve these appointments. We'll move on to the next item. So as I think, um, most board members know, or all of you know, um, Carrie and I discussed a couple of weeks ago uh, whether it would be a good idea for the select board to meet with the senior management team. And we decided that, um, I would go and meet with the team and bring one other select board member. So I invited Matt as clerk. And, um, we're going to, um, report out now what happened at that meeting this morning. And then, um, that may have been one, the first one of several dialogue meetings. I personally hope so, and if so, I would I personally hope so, and if so, I would very much like to continue meeting with the senior staff and would invite Henry, Linda and Susan to attend future meetings. We did not want to exclude you at all, but we did want to have a meeting where the staff could speak freely and it, and it would not be public. And, and nothing in particular was said that, that was secret or anything. But we wanted to have a very informal app. So we would like to, if we have future meetings, we definitely like the next two people to go. So, Carrie, do you want to take us through your spreadsheet that you distributed? And then I'll talk about some thoughts that Matt and I will talk about some thoughts that we have.
Sure, I, I can do that. It's probably easiest if I put something up on the screen. And so I am just opening that now, but I, I believe I saw a hand.
Yeah. So if I, if I may just ask, can you just tell us how many SMT were there this morning? Because I know there may be some people who are out sick.
Right, I was very pleased, I didn't notice anyone else sick. We had eleven people who I thought was the entire team. Is that right, Carrie?
Yes, we, we did have a hundred percent participation.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I, I will share my screen, hopefully. How easy or difficult is this for people to are we close to being able to see this? Okay. And, and again, this, this was sent out to you late this afternoon. This was something that I put together after our meeting this morning, the SMT meeting. I, I would mention that I have received a lot of positive feedback from SMT members. They were very appreciative that the board is interested in opening a dialogue and appreciative particularly of, of the time of, of both Terry and Matt this morning. And so as I was thinking about this issue and the comments that I have heard recently, I, I really was thinking there are at least four different things going on here. And, and so I put this together to help sort of frame the, the dialogue. But the first is select board staff communications. The second is board and community, board and committee communications, where you have a staff liaison assigned. The third is board and commu, committee communications with staff when there's no staff liaison assigned, and then just resident and staff interaction and request for information. And so I think we, we want to focus up here, at least to start the discussion. And I was particularly struck by something that Henry said at, at the last meeting, that as a select person, you should not have less access to staff. And we certainly don't want you to feel that way. We want to work collaboratively with you. But I think it is important to recognize that when you become elected to the select board, you're interacting with staff at a different level. And staff may feel that the concerns or the questions that you raise are of a higher priority because of your position. So we want to, in this first bullet here, make sure that you, you feel free to reach out to staff. I think the appropriate contacts really are SMT, the senior management team, the department managers and division managers. You should feel free to reach out to them with any routine questions or requests for information. I would like to point out that it may be problematic if you're reaching out directly to line staff. That it would be, it, it's likely better for all if you're communicating with SMT members or division managers. The second point here, out of courtesy, I think the town manager should be made aware of any substantive meeting requests or information requests and copied on any emails where a response requires a substantial time commitment. So if you have routine questions, it's certainly appropriate to, to reach out to SMT members with those. Not everything requires copying to the town manager, certainly if you have basic questions. If when you receive your observer assignments, you want to reach out and meet with the SMT member assigned to the committee or department that you observe, the town manager does not need to be made aware of those types of communications. But if you are reaching out to something outside of your observer role as a courtesy, I would ask that the town manager just be notified. And that helps us be prepared to answer any additional questions that might come up. The other, the next two points here are that, as you know, under the Charter, the staff work under the direction of the town manager. And so select board members should not be directing or assigning work to staff. And also, select board members should not be making commitments on behalf of staff to any boards or committees. And these are two items that have been raised or called to my attention recently. There have been a couple of instances where there was at least a perception that one or more members was, was either assigning work or making a commitment to a board or committee on something that staff will do. And so that, that is something I think that is worthy of note and further discussion. Would you like me to pause here, or would it be helpful to move along and then take questions at the end?
Why don't we stop here? Because this is the main there's four boxes, and this is the most important box for the select board itself. This is where the five of us can most often run into trouble. So let's see if we have any questions or discussion points on this box. Any comments so far? Susan?
I just want to thank Carrie for putting this together because we all, I think, come in with different expectations, and we don't have a, a rulebook that, that we're given. So I think it's an important thing to, to discuss what expectations are and what the boundaries are. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is an excellent job, and we have such an opportunity now with the new year and a new interim town manager, and we can really make a new start. And, I mean, I'm, I'm one of the people who has crossed the line before, and I'm really determined now to get really good lines of communication going again. Other comments or questions on this box?
Let me just make one remark, and that is that the real benefit of this is that the, the message that is being conveyed to the senior management team is that the expectation is that they will be available to, to talk and meet with members of the board. And so if anything that we can do to enhance their accessibility to the board members, I think would help to implement this program. And I don't know whether phone numbers and email addresses for the senior management team are even readily available to the board. And I, I suggest that we, you know, take those kind of small mechanical steps that make it possible to live by this, this scheme.
Well, Henry, to clarify, it looks like in this first box that we should feel free to reach out to the SMT for routine requests or questions, but not to direct work or make commitments or, or, or make, do anything complicated.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying that I think that if, if the expectation is that we deal with the management team and not with the rank and file, is that the, that the management team be accessible?
Sure, and I, I just want to make sure that, that we have a common understanding. When you say deal with the management team, that, that would be on request for information or we're looking to gain a better understanding of a particular project that, that might be
Absolutely, I'm not
Sure, and, and I I guess I, I would like to apologize if, if any of you have felt that any of the management team hasn't been available. I, I, I think they, they would feel that they really have been available and certainly interested in, in helping to answer any questions that you may have about, about any of the operations. And, and only would be concerned if, if there were, you know, service requests that were coming directly from select board members or, or directions about projects and activities.
Well, first of all, Carrie, there's no need to apologize about that. I definitely did feel I've been on the board for two past years, and the whole time I had felt that I was not allowed to contact the SMT for any reason. And that was very awkward, and I never felt that the SMT wasn't willing. I felt like they wanted to talk to me and I wanted to talk to them, but we weren't allowed to talk to each other. And it was very awkward, and I feel incredibly relieved that we're going to have a system now where we can have a dialogue and we can work together. And it's not going to be perfect, I'm sure there'll be bumps in the road, but we'll find a, make a real good effort at it. Okay, are we ready to move on to the other pieces? Like, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I think next I will focus here on board and committees where there is a staff liaison versus where there is not. So, for a board or committee that has a staff liaison, any request for information or documents should be made directly to that staff liaison. In the course of carrying out board and committee business, there may be requests for substantive work. And that is likely completely appropriate. And it would be incumbent upon the staff liaison to discuss with his or her supervisor if there were any concerns or need to prioritize work. So an example here might be, I'll use one of my own examples, working with the finance committee. There have been times during the course of my tenure with the town that the finance committee has been interested in taking up a special topic. A recent topic was understanding debt, debt management. And we had a subcommittee, and we spent a reasonable amount of time over a fairly short period of time talking about this issue. So this would not be, this was not something that I would ask permission from the town manager to pursue. It's, it's just in the normal course of, of duty in carrying out the mission of the, of a board or committee. At the planning board, obviously this comes up often where the planning board may be interested in pursuing a new law or a change to an existing bylaw, and staff be working with the planning board to, to prepare a warrant article without seeking approval from the town manager. Where this differs is where we have a board or committee interacting with staff, but not, not a staff liaison. So we have a number of boards and committees that do not have dedicated staff liaisons. And I think the easiest solution here is to provide staff liaisons to boards and committees, even, even if it's just a staff member to turn to, to help them nav, navigate the, the process, so to speak. But where there is no staff or committee liaison assigned, probably the best course of action is that request for information should be routed through the town manager's office, not necessarily the town manager. But it certainly could be taken up with a staff member in the town manager's office. And this really is the best course of action where there's no liaison assigned. Now, you may recall from our recent discussion about the fiscal twenty three budget that there is a request for some additional, an additional support staff in the town clerk's office specifically to help facilitate board and committee agendas and minutes and that type of thing. We also have the senior administrative assistant position in the town manager's office that we have completed second round interviews and completed reference checks. And hopefully later this week, we'll be in a position to make a request or make a job offer to the selected candidate. This is Jeremy's position, which is really the administrative person for the select board and provides administrative assistance to boards and committees without a dedicated staff person. So I will stop here for questions and comment.
Matt?
Yeah, so I'm interested in that idea of assigning additional staff liaison to even the boards and committees that don't currently have one. My one concern there, of course, is that my, my sense is that town staff has been kind of overstretched a little bit, and so this would add another responsibility. But I also know that, for example, the DI Commission has no assigned person, and it's a brand new board, you know, that hasn't, doesn't have anybody with experience on town committees. So they struggle with minutes, they struggle with lots of things. And so it would be a huge help to have someone identified at least. I, I understand that you might not be able to attend all the meetings. Someone that, to go to as a resource.
And if I could comment on that, I, I would say two things. I do recognize that our, our staff is stretched thin. And so we, we do have a request in the, in the fiscal twenty three budget for an additional support person in the town clerk's office who would help. The second point I would like to make is that the town of Concord does a very excellent job at providing training opportunities to staff. And one of the training opportunities that we have provided to a number of staff is the opportunity to participate in a certificate in public management program offered through Suffolk University. I would say at, at this point in time, we've probably put ten, ten or so staff members through that program. These are people who are interested in assuming management roles and, and sometimes even, even the, the role of town manager at some point in their career. And we, I, I think this is a group of people that might benefit from the opportunity to have one of these assignments. that might benefit from the opportunity to have one of these assignments, even if it's outside of an area that they currently are involved in. And an excellent example of this is our public information officer, Erin Stevens, who is one of the, um, employees who has been through this program. She's interested in becoming a transportation planner, which is completely different than what she's doing. And she volunteered to be the staff liaison for the transportation advisory committee. And I think there are other people who would be willing and interested in taking on these roles, and I, I'd like to be able to provide that opportunity, and I, I think it's a win-win.
I completely agree. I, transportation meeting, when, um, this is, and all the new committees are um, having some difficulty getting started, and struggling with their charge, and struggling what to do and how to do it. And we have a lot of new folks who have never been on town committees before, which is great, that was one of our goals. And so this committee, like the others, was struggling, how do we find this information? How do we find that information? And Erin stepped up and volunteered and said she would get the information because she knows where to find a lot of it. And it really, really helped a lot. It was terrific that she did that. Okay, uh, let's go on to the last box.
Okay, so this is communication between residents and staff. Um, obviously, residents should feel free to make contacts with staff at all levels throughout the organization. That I, I don't think that residents don't have to have the same concerns at interacting even with line staff as um, elected members of the board do. Uh, we obviously have more ability and latitude to prioritize requests that come in from residents, as long as we're complying with public records law and any other applicable law. The one note I would make here, which is something that was raised in, in our meeting earlier today, and I have heard this before, um, that some of the, some of the interactions between residents and staff have become heated. Uh, there have been times that staff members have felt uncomfortable, and unfortunately, in a few cases, we've had staff members actually concerned for their safety. Uh, we realize there's a lot going on in the world. There's a lot going on in Concord. Um, it, it's a difficult time, but we, we definitely cannot be tolerating interactions that, that are causing staff to have safety concerns. And so that, I think that's, um, that's where we had talked about, um, a code of conduct, and obviously, any code of conduct would be applied across the organizations. It would plot, apply to boards and committees, it would apply to people entering public buildings. This is something that has come up, we're not, we're not unique here. There are a number of communities, even some of our neighbors, who have adopted a code of conduct. And there is a model code of conduct that the Nass Municipal Association has put together in response to requests that they have received from other, um, other community members. So I, I, I don't want to suggest that many, or most, or even a majority of our interactions with residents are not great, because often the interactions, or more often than not, the interactions are superb, they're wonderful. Uh, in my time here, one of, one of my favorite things has been interacting with residents. There are a lot of very nice and interesting people, and we don't want to leave you with the impression that, that there are a lot of negative interactions. But unfortunately, the few that we've had over the past year have been, they've been tough. Uh, and, and we understand there are a lot of reasons why that's happening, but they're tough nonetheless, and, and we would like the opportunity to create a, um, environment.
Sorry, I was on mute. Okay, thank you very much, Carrie. This is really helpful. And, um, I would just like to add a few comments, um, from, um, some thoughts that Matt had and I had. And, um, there's a few times when I'll call on Matt here. This is a document I sent out late today uh, from ideas from the meeting from number one to twelve. Numbers one and two, Carrie has already, um, covered. Select board members may request information but may not direct the work of town staff. And please copy the town manager on communications with the SMT for non, and I, I should say for non-routine matters. I think I heard Carrie say, if we just want a copy of a document, we don't want to clutter up her inbox with that kind of stuff. Now, um, number three, um, came up in the meeting today. It seems that, um, the town manager and the select board chair should have some regular discussions that are on a regular basis about um, improving the tone of discourse. This is a national problem. So, and Concord is not immune, but one of the best things about the character is that we really have a lot of civility here, but we're losing it. We're, we're starting to meld in to rest of the country. So what can we do to, I, I agree with Carrie, ninety-nine percent of the residents are fabulous. That one percent, what can we do to try to prevent, um, people from attacking each other, honestly, verbally, or, you know, we don't really want that to happen. And one of the things that I think we should do is this code of conduct. Fortunately, we have not had to do it yet, but there have been incidents in other towns, even physical incidents where people have gotten hurt. So before that happens here, let's develop this code. And it's not just for boards and committees, it's not just for staff. This is for citizens and business people. Everybody who comes to the town hall is gonna have to follow this code so that if someone is really out of line and endangering other people, there is a way to get them to leave the building, if that's absolutely necessary. I mean, we really have to write up this code. And it will also be a code for how to behave at meetings. And, um, we're gonna be taking a look at the MMA model code and some best practices of other towns. And we'll be talking all about this at our focus meeting in February. Uh, next item, I would like Matt to address.
Yes, so, uh, this is also related, I think, to when things get out of hand, which, uh, you know, occasionally we have seen, um, where, for example, there might be defacing a property, or vandalism, or threats made. Um, these kinds of, uh, behaviors, um, it's an important role that the select board has, I believe, to be able to make public statements in support of civil discourse, you know, not, and, and, and try to bring behavior back into line. And I think that we have done that in the past, and that we just need to continue that practice, and, and that when there is, uh, something that, that's gotten out of hand, um, to, to really call it out. Uh, because that, that's a way in which we can help support our town and our town staff.
Right. And I will briefly be, um, discussing all of these items at the upcoming chair's breakfast. But that's a very short meeting, and it's usually a roundtable. So we may end up following up with a workshop. As you recall, we had a workshop, um, several months ago, um, that Carrie and Carmen Reese ran about town meeting and the ethics, um, the open meeting law. And after we develop the code of conduct, we may end up having another workshop. We'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, and then the next issue, I will again, uh, refer to Carrie and/or Matt.
Yeah, so I think that while the initial approach that a, so, uh, town staff member should make if they feel that a committee's making an unreasonable request is to their own supervisor, that there may also be a role that the select board liaison can play, I think, in working with the committee members, um, to, you know, uh, set expectations. And so I just wanted to say that while the primary role of the select board liaison is to um, be an observer, uh, there's also the opportunity for them to be a resource, not just to the committee as they have questions about their charge and other issues, but also potentially to the assigned town staff if, if they feel like there's a way to perhaps, um, you know, improve communications.
Right, and just now I added a note to that item. I'm really thinking, um, after attending a recent meeting, that part of the liaison's role might be to observe the tone. And if there is too much of a negative tone, or if someone is attacking someone verbally, maybe the liaison needs to step in and say, point of order. You know, we don't treat each other like that. We treat each other with respect. Or if the committee is outside of their charge, the liaison needs to step in. Other than that, though, the liaison doesn't vote, they don't express their opinions and, and get in the way. But I think if the committee is really out of line, or if a citizen comment is out of line, possibly the liaison could step in and help the chair control the meeting. Um, another thing that we really need to do more of is to appreciate and respect our staff and their important contributions. And so there are two examples of that coming up. When we have our ARPA-focused meeting, we really need the expertise of our staff. And on the select board, we are in touch with the citizens. We know which potholes need to be fixed, maybe, and if they're complaining about broadband being down, but we don't have a sense of what are the big priorities? And how is it gonna work if something's in enterprise fund, and something else is in the general fund? And, um, how are we gonna make a roadmap for all of this? So we have these unique opportunities now where the feds and the state are really gonna be funding us. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We need a really good roadmap. We need everybody working together on this, the community, the citizens, the board, and especially the expertise of the staff. Um, another example is for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, um, Matt mentioned this. And this is a way to harness people's energy in a positive direction. Um, we have a lot of citizens who really, really have energy and passion. And it can be working on a really positive, uh, event here. So we should harness that energy. So finally, um, I want to say again that, um, Linda, Susan, and Henry, we really want you to be able to participate. I've asked Carrie to find out if the SMT would like to continue and have more meetings like this, and if they do, um, we'll be asking which of you wants to, one or two of you would like to go next. So I hope that everybody will have a turn to go, and, and that way we can all, I guess, be rowing in the same direction as they say. So are there any other questions or comments on this?
I'm glad you had this meeting with the SMT, this first meeting with the SMT, and it sounds like it was very productive. And, um, so it's a good start.
Okay, thank you, Linda. I mean, uh, Susan, yes. Oops, Susan, you're on mute.
I agree with Linda's comment, and also just that I can't remember ever having a conversation like this at select board, and I think it's really important, and it's a really good first step, and I've already learned some things I could try out at, at, uh, meetings that I'm liaison for. So thanks. Immediate results for me.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm really hoping that, um, I, I think if I was on the SMT listening to the meeting, I, I'd try to have an open mind, but there might be some skepticism. You know, Matt and I went in there saying all this great stuff, but now we have to follow through as a board and really step up and do it. And we're, we're not gonna be perfect. So, um, if we see each other stepping out of line, we should speak up to each other.
The, the other thing I would just comment on, if I may, uh, Terry, is that we have, um, we do have a couple, um, committees that, um, have, take their charge very seriously, and, um, and, and bring a lot of expertise to the table, but may or may not, um, be in a mindset of working collaboratively with, with the town. And so I think, um, we should identify where we might think that exists, and specifically find ways, um, to strengthen the communication there.
Okay, and, um, my suggestion is if you have an idea of any such committee, you might want to talk with the liaison and try to brainstorm, or, or contact me, and we'll, we'll try to figure out how to communicate better with this committee.
Yep. I, I think both the town manager, the interim town manager, and you, that would be helpful to you. And you probably maybe already have some sensitivity to this, um, but I certainly would, um, be happy to comment on that.
Very much. I would appreciate your comments on that, definitely. Anything further on this topic? Hey, thank you. And thank you again, Carrie, and the whole senior management team for being open-minded and having us come in today. I, I learned, I think it was a really excellent meeting.
Or in, in behalf of myself and the senior management team, we thank for your time and attention to this and your willingness to enter into a dialogue, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, and let us know if, if, if and when you want to continue. Okay, now, we are going to very quickly go through the select board goals for this fiscal year. We're halfway through the year. I put together about six weeks ago this list, and then I had to revise it. But, um, what we'll do is we'll go through a section at a time and see what comments we have. So this first section is always the longest and the most complicated one. Effective governance, board organization, and communication.
Um, Carrie, would it be helpful if it, someone could put it up on the screen?
I was just gonna say that. Yes. Um, who do we have? Um, Matt, can you put it up, or, um, I don't think Chris is with us anymore.
I, I'm, I'm working on it.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, but it looks like we got, I got beaten to the punch.
Ah. Okay, uh, can we scroll down, please? All right, here we go. Effective governance. So the first thing is basically complete. We did annual evaluation and determined about the contract renewal. Now, number two has to do with the twenty-thirty envisioned Concord. And basically, what we've done is not exactly what we said we were gonna do. In A, we were supposed to work with the town manager to lay out a five-year plan. Well, we really didn't do that. And in B, we were supposed to identify department goals and review progress at the beginning and the end of the fiscal year. Well, we didn't do that either, but what we did do was an alternate. We had a focused- an alternate. We had a focused meeting, which I think was really successful, where everybody who had a hand in envision conquered came in and and we had a really good dialogue. So I really didn't know how to label this, because I still think we need to do A and B. I still think we need to work with Carrie probably to lay out a five year plan, and we need to identify progress at the beginning and the end of the fiscal year. So that's how I I wrote it as not done slash alternate. And let me get through this section, and at the end of each section, we'll take comments and stuff. So number three, we did approve a charge and seat the fiber broadband committee. They are working hard. And number four, we did the same for the Personnel Board Study Committee, and they too are working hard. So those are good. In the second part of number four, evaluate recommendations and decide the future charge of the personnel board. Well, we're not up to that yet, and I'm thinking that's going to probably be a goal for next year, that second part there. Number five is ongoing, providing guidance for all the town volunteers. But we did restart the annual training session. Thank you to Carrie for setting that up. Number six, we are continuing to promote open and transparent government through enhanced technology and public access television. Number seven, let's see. Oh, right. So we had a citizen correspondence policy. And we tweaked it, I guess, and changed it around, but we're basically doing most of it, and we're definitely continuing the publication of the town manager's report. Number eight is complete in terms of the so-called green cards that are now volunteer cards. Um, number nine is complete as an alternate. We did have a focus meeting. We probably need to do some more work on that in the future, but for now, we got a lot of that done. Number 10, we have not done it all, which is the public private partnership agreements. The town manager is supposed to update us every so often, and we have not done that. And number 11 and 12 are ongoing as we improve the website and improve the process of preparing for the select board meetings. So that's the longest and most complicated section. I'm going to stop there and see what comments you have. Linda?
So I I have a couple, and thank you for doing that. You know, I'm reminded, in terms of the five year plan for Envision Conquered, I'm reminded of when Elise Woodward recently came in for our Envision update. She talked about how the plan itself was aspirational. And, you know, as I watch what the SMT staff are, who staff some of our key committees are doing, they are actually bringing forward the next set of goals each year. And within the plan itself, we've already identified short, middle, and, you know, long term goals. So, and I think it was Matt who said at our Envision Conquered meeting, that, you know, we've already accomplished about a third of them, which in the, since we have 10 years, 10 year plan, that we've done quite a bit. So, um, I, this is a long way of saying that to have a rigid five year plan is not quite how I think about it, because some of it is as opportunities present themselves, as grants present themselves. And and my observation is, is that the individual departments and the SMT staff are sort of gauging that as they bring forward for that year their goals. Now, our interim town manager may have a different view of that and and bring her own own stamp to that, but that's, that's just sort of how I I'm thinking about it.
Well, Linda, I'm so glad you brought that up. I think in many cases where I have the word alternate, you've expressed it much more articulately than I could, but Envision conquered is a living, breathing document, and things change. So sometimes the select board's goal has to change. So when we wrote our goal at the beginning of the year, or this could have been a goal from three years ago that we keep just putting in our plan again, we need to reword the goal. So we've accomplished a lot with Envision conquered. It's the goal that isn't worded exactly right. When it says laying out a five year plan, that probably should be rephrased for the future years. So I'm really glad you brought that up.
I think one way we were thinking about it in last year or the year before was asking the SMT and the town manager to bring forward what what goals in the Envision conquered, they were going to focus on that year. Even that was helping move, would, if that had occurred in just that fashion, would have helped move it forward, and at least informed us at the select board what the departments were thinking about.
Other comments on this section?
I just wanted to highlight just how many of these got done, and I hats off to you, Terry, for driving us through it, but it's really quite an accomplishment, considering that we're only halfway through our our fiscal year. Now, we're a little more than that through our term, given the the town meeting date, but it's great progress, and my joke was that we should take the rest of the year off, which I made it the last week of December, perhaps referring to the calendar year, but it's it is great, and the items that are left, I think, are doable for the most part. I also agree with the idea of perhaps simplifying, rather than having a formal five year plan, instead, you know, doing periodic check ins on on the progress against the law range plan and suggesting, you know, that people identify what they're going to work on in a year that that is moving us forward on it.
Yeah, well, thank you, Matt. I I I loved your joke, and I thought you meant the fiscal year.
Yeah. You can take it either way, I guess, but.
But you were the one who suggested that Envision Concord Focus Meeting, for example, and that was a fantastic idea. And this is a very hardworking board. Everybody reads the packet, everybody contributes. And I just, I couldn't have asked for a better board to work with. It's really been wonderful. So we have made a lot of progress. It's just great. So moving on, the financial stability. We have completed number three, which is the capital planning task force. And on number one, two, and four, we are working on the debt exclusion funding for the middle school, the special town meeting, the brainstorming for financing it, and reviewing strategies with the town manager for risk assessment and legal budget. Let me do the next couple also, and then we'll stop again. So affordable housing. We, number one, we talked about a Warren article. And we're definitely going to have to discuss what to do about that, given the new free cash situation. And number two and three, the housing production plan and alternatives. We heard a lot about that tonight. These are ongoing. Number four and five, in affordable housing are also ongoing, if you want to scroll down a little more. Thank you. We need a successor to the inclusionary housing bylaw, and we want to support the planning board for zoning, best zoning practices. And under DEI, let's start with number two. We definitely have an active DEI committee that is ongoing, working on this. And number one, I think we we will be now getting a report from the consultant. So we will be able to do number one shortly, I think, if my understanding is correct. So let me stop there and take comments on those sections. All right, seeing none.
Well.
All right, Linda.
You know, I I I don't know if it was matter who spoke to this earlier about the kind of energy and support that a new committee needs to get off the ground and a good start. And I I personally just, and I'm not the liaison, but just looking from afar, I think the DEI is such an important community issue. And to not, and somehow I don't feel as though they've gotten off the ground in the way that we would have liked to have seen. And and some of it has to do just with timing and all the competing things we've been dealing with. But I'm wondering if we need to spend a little more focus there.
I would certainly support that.
What did you say, Matt?
I would certainly support that.
So Matt and Linda, what do you recommend? Do you want the DEI committee to come?
Do they, do they have a staff liaison? I don't think they do.
They don't.
So that's, yeah, that's part of the problem, I think.
Carrie, do you have a staff person that you maybe couldn't identify, maybe not right this minute, but out of that pool of interested folks who want to gain experience with with town committees?
So I had somebody text me during the course of the meeting indicate an interest in being staff liaison to this committee, and so I I will review that tomorrow. And so there's an opportunity for a pretty immediate assignment.
Fabulous. And Matt and Linda, do you have other recommendations? Do you want the DEI committee to come and meet with the select board?
I don't know if that's the right thing to do yet. But the other thing that I have raised before and that we did discuss as we were forming the commission was we said that while it was, you know, in the middle of a budget year and wasn't feasible to allocate funds for perhaps a consultant or any other professional support for this committee in this current year, that perhaps we'd look at it next year, but then, you know, I don't know that there's any provision being made for that going forward. So that this is another key thing that that, you know, this kind of work typically or frequently does have some professional element. Again, the commission's just gotten underway. It's not like they're coming in with a specific funding request yet. It's just that assuming that, you know, next year, they're, by then, they will have hit their stride, will be in the same situation of going, well, you know, there's no money, wait another year. So so that's, again, I don't know if there's any way around that, but I did want to raise it.
We're not necessarily talking about a large amount of money.
No, no. So.
I don't know if this would be useful and whether the 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 talents or skills are the same, but I think the last time I looked at the expenditures for the DEI consultant that the that the town had hired had about 10,000 bucks left on the approved expenditure. And I don't know what, I don't know what that consultant has really been doing for the town employees, but if that is no longer useful, and that consultant, and we have the budget for it, it would be helpful to the DEI committee. Maybe we can ship him over to the DEI committee.
Or or the funds, anyway. Yeah.
Or the funds. Yeah.
So the 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 funds that are in the budget, I believe, are set aside for internal initiatives, you know, within our own organization to help us address some of our issues. That doesn't mean that we can't find some small amount of funding for the committee if it if it needs it. But in my, in my one day in office, I haven't had the opportunity yet to to get into this issue and have not seen the report requested a number of times. And so that that is on my list. It's in my top five for sure of most important things to address. But certainly, if the committee, if there are minor expenses of of the committees and and the lack of funding is keeping them from moving forward, we can solve that problem.
Yeah, and again, I don't have a specific thing. I'm just anticipating in this next year, there there may be.
I was only making the suggestion if 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 in your judgment, Carrie, the the services that were being provided to the town were not, were not useful, and that that we could get some value out of the commitment that we, financial commitment that we had made.
But I I also would say that I would imagine that the internal needs of the town staff are still there, and that maybe additional funding, you know, will be required to go after some of that, too. I mean, I I could totally understand that it's not like we did that one consultant project and we're done.
Right. Okay, so Carrie will investigate and and get back to us on on this. Okay. All right, so let's finish up with the last few sections here. Wanted to screen share again. Okay, so number one, we have not yet, that I know of, launched a development of a multi-year integrated planning process for land use. So that's something that we haven't started yet.
Well, except for that, I mean, the housing production plan is partially that, and I know that we have the recreation and open space plan, which is another piece of it.
Yeah, that's true. Um, okay. Number two is ongoing monitoring the protection of White Pond, the Jero Land, Warner Pond. Uh, number three, um, I think the transportation committee might take this on. I kind of hope they do. But we need to have a complete streets plan. We have a very basic plan, I think, at the CPW, but we need a really good plan for for complete streets. Number four and five, Esteban Trail is still being litigated. We're waiting for the judge to rule. And number five is ongoing. We have started the 250th anniversary committee. Moving on to economic vitality, we are continuing to promote town events and commercial activity. And we have established a new municipal economic vitality division. We are providing input to the Thero Business District. And number four, we started talking about that a little bit, and we're going to give the legal team some time now to work with EPA, and we will be back on this sometime in early 2022. Number five, the transportation committee is getting started, and as I said, they're hoping they're planning to do a forum in March. Number six. Number six. Growth and stability of broadband. That's ongoing with our fiber broadband committee. Monitoring potential changes with the post office and the armory. Henry has been doing a little bit of work with that. And number eight, we have not done any effort that I know of on the sewer improvement fee and the parking system. And number nine, we have not done any work on wireless communication or cellphone. Service in the town center. So I mean, one of the things is we do have a few that say not done, but. Halfway through the year, we don't have half of them not done. We do have four or five of them not done. And regional and state interests, we are working with our legislative reps. Just today I got another email from Tammy's office that some of these petitions are out of one committee going to another committee. The state legislators came and met with us. And we are continuing to participate in all of these regional organizations. We are continuing to work on the regional dispatch center. And the 250th and the Battle Road Group. And on January 24th, we'll be doing item number six, the Minuteman Regional Tech High School will come in. To give us an update. And finally, all of these items on COVID are ongoing. Interestingly enough, now number five and six, I'm not sure what they have to do with COVID. They look like, oh, well, okay, number six does. I don't know how number five ended up in the COVID section. That doesn't look like it's even in the right section. But COVID is ongoing. It's keeping everybody very busy. The staff. Pretty much indicated today, this is the busiest year they've ever had. Some, some of them have been there. I think Chief Judge has been there 39 years. And, and, and they all agree, this is the absolute most busy time they've ever had. It's been a very challenging period and we. Are still going. It's still ongoing, unfortunately. We're not finished with COVID yet. So comments, all questions on these last sections? I don't mean to rush through it, but I do think that we don't need to spend a whole lot of time because we have accomplished a lot and. Really great job by everyone. Any comments or questions? Okay.
I'm just gonna make one quick. Rhetorical question, I guess. You know, in some cases, we have identified board goal. But there is not. But the town, I'm going to say the town. Management has decided that. You know, in this case, the funding for the middle school reserve fund. Is a higher priority and I'm on board with that because in fact, we've all agreed how important it is to mitigate. The tax burden on citizens down the line, but using that as an example. We sometimes have, have a little bit of a conflict about board goals that have been identified and, and. Sort of recognition of a townwide goal that we're concerned about, right? And I guess I'm wondering how we, how we work that out in the future. Even if we understand where we are now, right now, given what's before us. Does it make sense what I'm trying to identify?
Anybody have ideas about that?
I just think it's a natural thing. It's a, you know, large organization, many people involved and we have to negotiate. So.
Yeah, that's one way to look at it, yeah.
We also have so many different things we're trying to accomplish and sometimes the goals. Of one might conflict with the goals of another.
Right. And, and as I say, in this case, we, you know, we, we understand the, the. Environment we're working in and, and the, and, and we support both of the goals. And so, you know, as Matt says, I guess we just recognize that and. Keep that in mind as we go forward on other things.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on. Item is the license renewals, most of which we did last meeting. And there's always a few stragglers come in at the end, so. Chris Carmody has supplied a memo and does anyone have any questions?
It looked like it was all in order, yeah.
Chris, you're back.
Yeah, these are just some, uh, these are all renewals. Uh, we do have a few stragglers. We are expecting additional tour guide licenses over the next few weeks and months, uh, which is normal. I did say, and I think Terry asked about this last time, I neglected to say that for the alcohol licensing. The only non-renewal was 99 because they've left their establishment, so all the other vendors. Renewed and were approved. Yeah, so this is just a few kind of late submissions. They've all complied with the licensing requirements.
And they've all paid their fees. Great, Linda?
Chris, can I just ask one question? And this actually goes back to the last time, but it's relevant for going forward in the future. I remember that you added some additional names at the end that the tourist. Office had given you. For their staff and I, is it true that each one of those has also taken the course?
I believe it is. I mean, that, that's under the purview of Beth Williams, uh, so she coordinates that, but that's, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Henry?
I, I struck me as being a little bit strange when I saw that list and. Saw that we were asking the people who were town guides to pay a $35 fee for their license. I guess it's not a lot of money, but it seems to me they're providing a service to the town. And that I didn't know why we should be charging the money to do it.
Now, that's an excellent point, Mr. Dane. The, the staff that reported Beth Williams, their fees are waived.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to approve all listed license applications as detailed in the administrative manager's memo dated December 31st, 2021. And included in the board packet for this meeting.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
I.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Thank you very much, Chris, for chasing down all this paperwork. Really appreciate it. Okay, we are going to move on to possible annual town meeting articles. There are two listings here that Carrie will be talking about and then. It reminded me that we might want to talk about a third one that I'll get to. Go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you. So I have two items, potential articles that I wanted to call to your attention. In advance of the meeting on Saturday, I, I realize we have not the opportunity to talk about either of these. I wanted to make sure you had some advanced notice before Saturday's meeting. So the first is related to the town's OPEC trust fund. We do have a trust fund that was established by town meeting or reestablished by town meeting recently. We, we would have an article anyway to make an appropriation into the fund. And also to set a budget for expenses of the fund. When we reestablished the OPEC trust fund. The decision was made to appoint a sole trustee, the treasurer of the town is the sole trustee. That there would be a reporting requirement of the trustee to the select board to provide some visibility into the fund's activities. And that the town's trustees of town donations. Effectively serve as an investment advisor to the sole trustee relative to the investments of the trust fund. We had some conversation with the select board. Up front about the setting up this structure and we had some conversation with the trustees of town donations about their potential role. And everybody was in agreement. Unfortunately, when we got into this issue, this advisory role issue a little further with the trustees. Of town donations, they felt that what was being asked was more than. They, they felt was appropriate for the work that they, that they are doing, that the. Trust fund has a different purpose than the trust funds that they oversee and. We didn't really think it through completely. And after we brought in the town's actuary to talk to the trustees about the fund, the purpose of the fund and the potential role. It just seemed to be more than what was reasonable to ask of this committee. So my, my request would be that we have an, as part of the article. The recurring article that we would seek town meeting author. Trustee to hire an investment manager who could help the trustee in ensuring. That the fund is invested in an appropriate manner. And so that, that is what is being presented under this particular article. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the first article.
Linda? Carrie, um, yeah, I know the challenges you had there. Have you considered, and you probably have. If in fact, town meeting approved. Hiring Investment Council. Going back to the trustees, uh, whether or not that was in fact, the piece that was missing for them. So that there would be, you know, another independent group to. Be a sounding board. I, I don't know. I'm sure you've thought about this, but.
I, I think the concern of, of the trustees is that the. This fund, you know, understanding the specific purposes of this fund and then making. Investment decisions based on. The, the purpose of, of this fund, that they, they just felt that it was completely different than what they're working with now. The makeup of that committee is excellent. We have two investment. On that or, or persons in, working in this field. We have an attorney, a member of. Who, who served, who, who works in the nonprofit space, so it's a great group of people. When I asked them that question. They said, sure, the, the portfolio should be set up 60% equities, 40%. 40% fixed, you know, it sort of end of conversation, like there, there doesn't need to be an ongoing. I, I think they don't feel that there's an ongoing role for them that fits within the context of what they're doing. For the town already.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Carrie, is this. Advisor that we have to hire, is this a new cost for the budget or will it come out of the OPEC trust fund?
So it, it will be paid by the OPEC trust fund and it is. The trust fund is already invested and we're already paying fees associated with the investment. And there may be a slight increase because we're not currently paying for investment. Management services right now, but it would be borne by the trust fund and not the town's general fund.
Thank you.
I, I should have mentioned, and I know it's, it's in the memorandum, but just for, for anybody listening. The, the OPEC trust fund has, has $33.6 million in it, so this is a significant fund. And as of, as of the 63021. Or liability valuation, our OPEC fund is, or our OPEC liability is about 62% funded. This is a significant investment community has made and it's important. That the funds have the proper investment advisory services associated with it.
Do I understand properly that we, that, that the people who are now advising us on this investment, this fund, don't want to do it anymore?
Um, no, not at all. So we don't have an independent. Investment manager, the. The. The, the, the funds that this is invested in, certainly. The managers of those are interested in maintaining the assets. But we don't have an independent person who is providing advice. And for a fund of this size, I think that's important.
Sounds, sounds like it. It never, you're saying, it sounds like what you're saying is that we're invested in various. Investment products or investment funds, which are to some extent managed by the, the proprietors of those funds. But there's nobody giving us overall investment management as to what funds the money should be put in. In what proportions?
That, that, that's correct, that. Right.
And, and for that kind of money, certainly it makes sense. If for no other reason, for liability purposes, to have somebody who is responsible for making. The, an independent, you know, consultant making those investment decisions. Or at least giving us the independent investment advice.
Right, so at this point, the sole trustee, which currently is, is me in my capacity. As treasurer collector or treasurer of the town. The decisions, the investment decisions could be made just by me. And that is something, it's important for the town to have. An investment professional. And, and it's important for the town to have a professional providing advice to the trustee.
And during the time that you're acting as the interim town manager, that financial director position is going to be held, not by you. But by somebody else.
Correct.
So that's, that's even, I think, another important consideration. That, uh, it's, it's not you, it's going to be another, a different person who is less experienced than you.
Right, but I, I would be bringing this forward to you as a best practice regardless of, of who was in that role. This is, this is an important next step for the town to take. Because of the, the size of the fund.
And it won't get smaller, we hope.
I hope that as well.
Well, thank you for thinking of this and putting in this Warren article. And also. Having this background in writing in our packet was very helpful. Appreciate that.
Or, and, and so then we have one additional. Warren article and this is a request to establish another, oh. Believe there's a question.
I know, but I, we're gonna, we're gonna hold the question till the, till the end, keep going.
So, so the next item is a request to establish. An, another trust fund, which I have noted as electrification trust, but I think we probably would be. An another trust fund, which I have noted as electrification trust, but I think we probably would be looking at. A sustainability trust because it. It may be broader than just electrification. And so the, the genesis of of this article is that. A couple of months ago, the former town manager and I were contacted. By um. Two residents who expressed an interest in making a sizable donation. To the town. Their particular interest is in the electrification of the town's fleet and specifically. Public safety and public works. They would like to be able to make a qualified charitable distribution from an IRA account and in order to do that, they need to be. Uh, making that distribution to a five oh one C three. We reached out to town council to ask town council to look at, at this particular. Request. To. See if the town actually needed to set up a separate five oh one C three or as as a municipal entity. Were we a five oh one C three like organization? The, the opinion. In, in short order was that. We wouldn't need to set up a five oh one C three, that the town could accept. The donation and. The qualified charitable distribution requirements. But in reviewing. This and and having several conversations. The donor and and with staff internally, we believe that there are a number of benefits. To having a separate trust versus treating this as a, as a gift. We have a number of gift accounts that we manage, but. None of them are as sizable as the potential donation that we're talking about and so. We believe it's in the best interest. Of all to establish a separate trust fund and so that, that is what this item. Has to do with and. We are hopeful that once this is established, there may be others who would be interested in. Making similar donations for, uh, to help the town achieve its sustainability initiatives.
Okay. Questions from the board on that potential article.
Carrie, li- uh, likely to. Fall under the aegis of the trustee of donations if this were to be set up.
Um, we are still working through. A draft of the trust document. And so that, that is still to be determined. But I'm, I'm. I, I guess we'll leave it at, it's still to be determined.
Okay. I did see the explanation that you gave, so, yeah.
Okay. Henry and then Susan.
My concern is whether or not the donors would exercise any significant control. Over the expenditure of funds from the trust, either actually by. Having, uh, playing a, 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 a role in its management. Or by defining the um. The permitted expenditures in such a narrow way that it could become a burden to the town. And I, I have kind of a instinctive. Reluctance to. To accept. Uh, gifts, uh, for the town to accept gifts that are. Uh, over which it doesn't have sufficient control over the, the use and expenditure. Uh, because then they're not really gifts, they're almost, they're, they're giving you money and tying your hands.
Uh, so I, I certainly can appreciate that thought. We've had numerous conversations with the donor and I don't see that. As an issue at all, uh, the, the donor in this instance has. Specified an interest in electrification of. Public safety and public works vehicles. Anything more specific. Than that, so not. And in conversation with our sustainability director. We believe that the size of the donation certainly matches the need, so we don't see that as an issue.
And you hope that we can spend it before electricity becomes obsolete.
So you would be looking for um. The select board to. Put these articles on the warrant or would you as the town manager be the sponsor of these articles? Or, or, or what?
So I, either is fine with me. And, and we can just leave that to be determined, but I. E- either, either works for me.
Okay. And um, as we were doing this agenda. A third article came to my mind, so it didn't make it on this agenda. But. Recall. Uh, uh, Susan?
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to comment on this, the um. Sustainability. Trust. Um, it's, this last page says that. Um, trustees will be members of the senior management team, are these, are these suggested, suggested trust actions or are these? Pretty much baked into the donation.
So these are suggestions, the. The, the resident who I have been working with has, has kindly put together these talking points. And, and we're still in the process of, of finalizing what the recommendation would be.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to understand the status of that.
Okay, so just very briefly. Um, I'd like to get a sense of the board, whether you might be interested in the board. Submitting another warrant article that just came up. Um, as you recall, when we have a ballot question for a debt exclusion, as in the case of the middle school coming up. We cannot. Put any information. On. The. Ballot. Uh, no expli- explanatory, um, information could go on. However, it came to my attention, I didn't know this, this might be a recent rule. That by local option, we can vote to adopt something that would allow us in the future, it won't make it in time for. This middle school vote. But if we ever have a future debt exclusion. We would be able, if this article passed, to put. Explanations. In with the ballot material and Carrie, if I have any of this detail wrong, please correct me, not sure I have it all exactly right.
No. I mean, it is essentially, you may have seen ballots that. That say a yes vote means X Y Z and no vote means X Y Z, it's, it's that. Um, it, it's that that would be allowed. Through this local acceptance statute.
So I would, if the board wants, we can put in this article. And see if the town meeting will adopt it so that in the future, when we have a debt exclusion. We can put on the ballot, a yes vote means this, this and this, and a no vote means that and that.
Would that allow us to put the amount that is being approved by the voters on the ballot? Because that was the question that we dealt with is that the town meeting will pass the exclusion. And then when it goes to the polls. How much it is, whether even as, not even as a, as a range, but uh, nothing. Apparently we were told to be put on the. You know, the, the ballot at the poll that were be, that was being.
So it would not allow, it would not give us the opportunity to include it in the ballot question. Because the form of ballot questions for debt exemptions is set by statute. Um, but it likely would allow us in the explanatory information to include that. It would likely be able to appear on the ballot even if it wasn't. Even though it won't be in the question itself.
That, that would, that would accomplish the purpose.
Right, I think it would give a little more information like. Um, you know, why we need the school. Um, how much it would cost, median tax payer, et cetera. You know, just, just a few sentences, it's very brief, but right now we can't have anything at all. So. Um, would the board be in favor of us? I'm only. Ordinarily, I'd wait till the next meeting and put it on the agenda to discuss and we still can do that, but we do have. The preview meeting coming up this Saturday, so I just wonder if. If there's a sense of the board to bring this as a possible article at the preview meeting. If there's not a sense of the board, I, I won't.
I'd be in favor.
Me too, I think providing more information to the voters is always a good thing.
Okay, we will do that, thank you. Okay, um.
Also, do we, you know, we had this discussion earlier tonight about. The uh, free cash allocation for affordable housing and there of course is some doubt about that, but I think that for the sake of the preview meeting. You know, we should at least put it out there that we might bring something like that forward. You know, it might be at a lower amount, whatever, but it, I, I think that we should. Put that in the scope for this preview meeting. As we have in past years.
I would support that.
So we could put it on as a possible article that might come up. We don't have an amount yet because we're still looking at free cash.
That's right.
Okay. All right. So we have four articles that we're going to put on, okay. Uh, we are going to move on now to the. Water department interim note loan.
Okay, uh, thank you, so back in. You approved the submission of a loan application to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Seeking five hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars in funding. Which represents the remaining authorization under a two thousand and nine. Um, town meeting article. The loan proceeds will be used to offer low interest loans to residents to replace septic systems. And then the loans are repaid through a betterment on the property. Uh, this evening. We are presenting the, the actual interim note for your approval. It is, um. So we're seeking the select board's acceptance of the interim loan, which is being issued at an interest rate of zero percent. In order to accept the loan, the select board must vote its approval using the language that was provided in the packet, which unfortunately is a very. Lengthy motion. And, uh, the loan certificate. So again, this is the remaining authorization from a two thousand and nine article. To provide low interest loans to residents for septic system replacement.
So does the entire motion have to be read into the record or can the motion say as shown in the package?
It has to be read into the record.
Do we have a speed reader?
Uh, I'll give it a shot.
Can I, let me ask you a question about the, about the, the loan itself. Does it, is there any um, selection criteria a- a- as to who gets these loans? And is there any requirement that they do anything other than. Bring their septic system up to Title V standards period and nothing more?
So this program is run through the Board of Health. And the Board of Health receives applications, reviews them and makes. Decisions based on highest priority need. And that's, that's about the extent of what I can tell you off of the top of my head about how the program is run.
So it's, as far as we know. It, 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 it's merely essentially available to replace uh, failing systems or. Ones that are i- i- inadequate and it is not used to. Uh, upgrade, uh, the, the, uh, the, the processing.
No. No, it, it's not, it's, it's main intent is to provide a source of funds for people to replace failing systems.
Any, it now, is, doesn't the town have a requirement that if you are on a um. Have a, a public sewer accessible that you must connect to it? At least for new construction? Am I right?
You know, I, I would, I can make a note and, and look into that, I certainly know that is a requirement in other communities, I can't say. For certain if it's a requirement here without. Without checking in with our CPW.
And, and I think. Would we want some advice, at least from the Board of Health? To whether or not. Loans should or could be made. To people who could connect to the sewer. Uh, rather than replacing a failing septic system.
Um, I, again, I. I don't, I just don't have enough information about how the specifics of how they. Manage the, the program to be able to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for the speed reading? All right, go ahead, Matt.
All right, move that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed five hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars. Otherwise known as the bonds. Pursuant to chapters twenty nine C and one eleven of the general laws and a vote of the town passed April twenty ninth. Two thousand and nine, Article forty two. Which authorized a total borrowing of two million dollars for a community septic management loan program. Otherwise known as the project. That in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes. Otherwise known as the notes. From time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed five hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security. And sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, otherwise known as the trust. At a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement. And that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate and the principal maturities of each bond and note. And to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds or notes, such date. Form and maturities and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by the majority of the members of the select board and the treasurer and. Evidence by their execution of the bonds or notes. And that. Any certificates or documents relating to each bond and note collectively, the documents. May be executed in several counterparts, each of which may, shall be regarded as an original of. And all of which shall be constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by. Like other electronic transmissions shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents in all manners relating. Matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. And that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan agreement by the treasurer. Are hereby ratified, approved and confirmed and. That the treasurer and other appropriate town officials are. Each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote. Including execution and delivery of the financing agreement or agreements and the project approval certificate and regulatory agreement or. Agreements relating to the project.
Second, and Bravo.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, roll call, Luke.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Day.
After that reading, it has to be I, doesn't it?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I, it comes with the territory of being a clerk.
You gotta practice your speed, though.
I thought he was pretty fast.
You could never, you could never get in on those fifteen, fifteen second commercials with all. You could never, you could never get in on those fifteen, fifteen second commercials with all the exclamers.
Okay.
If, if I could mention, they tend to be sticklers about having actual signatures on documents. I do only need three signatures, but if, if any of you happen to be in the neighborhood in the next couple of days, stop in to sign, that would be greatly appreciated.
They say right here, we could use a signature page with a PDF and all that stuff instead.
I guess I, I missed that. So, so. And we will get this.
That's about the bonds or notes themselves, not the authorizing language, but still.
That's true. I should have been paying closer attention to, to the motion. Um, so if that is the case, we can circulate the signature page through Adobe to you. And pass us tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, great. We will now move on to liaison reports. Susan.
Um, I just have one. We actually have two. So the Personnel Board met on December twenty ninth and they talked about the recreation incentive program that, that we were presented with. And some potential town meeting, possible warrant articles. And it, it has to do with holidays, with the addition of Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is also known as Columbus Day. Removing the six month waiting period for vacation use and, and expansion of bereavement leave. And these are all part of the bigger picture of retaining and attracting employees. Um, there was an update from Personnel Study Task Force. And um, some of miscellaneous compensation schedule updates. And that's it. Happy New Year.
Susan, was there a price tag um associated with any of those items?
No, there was, there was, this was sort of the beginning of the uh there, well, the the holidays, the addition of us, another holiday would definitely have a price associated with it. But vacation, it wasn't um changing the accrual. It was accessing vacation before a six month probationary period. But you would, that wouldn't change that. And bereavement leave was, it was articulating who was immediate family, who was extended. And there was, um, there was an increase in the immediate family to five days. And then there was another section for three days and then one for one day. Um, so to the extent that someone else would have to fill the job, there would be a, a cost associated with it. But if um, if not, then there wouldn't, but there, there would be for the holiday.
So, um, you know, one of the things I'm always struck with is that, you know, in my past life, when, when a new holiday was added or any additional benefits, that um, what would also come forward with that is that we expect that will be an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that the, and I, for some reason, I, I never, I never hear those linked together. And I think it's important in terms of people understanding what they're acting on. Anyway, that's just a common.
Bring that back. I, I agree. I'll bring that back to the Personnel Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Well, let, let, let me just add one thing on the personnel. Uh, I, I think, a note should be made of the fact that Personnel Study Task Force, uh, we have now adopted and updated charge for that, uh, for that task force, uh, that they are trying to get their job done. And that I, I want to reinforce, uh, I want to reinforce the, um, the, the need for cooperation with them in providing the information that they need to do their job. And that, um, it's an important, they're performing an important function. And so it's worth the town investing the time and the trouble to assist them in getting this job done. Um, just along the lines that um, Linda suggested, a lot of things that we decide might be good or bad personnel policies come with a cost. And it's, you always want to know what it costs before you decide how good an idea it is.
Thank you, Henry.
Uh, thank you. I think that.
Let me just add on to that. I'm glad that you brought it up because it's also was requested of us that we help make it known that this task force exists. And that the charge, their page is available on the town website. And the charge, which was approved on December twentieth by the Select Board. Um, and previous to that was, was unanimously accepted by the task force. But that we, we spread the word.
And this is something that we as a board want. Uh, we feel it's important to the town that everybody involved, whether they be employees or managers, um, give it, give us their best because the, our, our greatest asset is, is the employees who serve the town.
Agreed. And I think we covered some of that conversation with, with the um earlier proposal or, or summary that, that Carrie had put together about how committees and staff interact. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next? Linda.
The Planning Board met on December twenty eighth last week and they discussed some potential warrant articles that are gonna, we'll hear more about on Saturday, I would think. One of them is some fine tuning to the um additional dwelling um bylaw changes that were implemented in two thousand and twenty. And they just need to do, add one additional piece to that that picks up an existing practice in town. And the other one they talked about um was looking at formula funding um for the Thorough Depot Business District. And uh, whether or not that's going to come forward at this time was not clear by the end of the meeting. But um, they also were discussing um a number of items as a follow up to the public forum where they received a great deal of um feedback about the Thorough Depot Business District zoning bylaw. So I think we'll learn more about where, where they stand on Saturday.
Board of Health, Board of Health, I uh listened in on the Board of Health uh discussion or um, uh, last week on uh, at which they spent a great deal of time talking about uh masking mandates. Um, and um, it was relatively easy for them to decide that um to, to adopt the practice that has now become, I think, widespread of a of mandating a mask in, in public indoor places. But then they went on for, spent about over an hour deciding what, what exceptions would be applicable and what, and what circumstances that mandate would not apply. They did a, it was a very intelligent and very thorough discussion. And I think you will see, which is something I had hoped they would do, is they issued a, a poster, if you will. And you may have seen it on the doors of so, some, at least some retail establishment, um, giving people an official looking kind of encouragement to, to wear a, a mask when they're indoors in a public place. Um, so um, they're taking, they're taking their job very seriously and they're doing a really, a really good job. Uh, the, as you know, the Library Committee, there's been some email flying back and forth about the, the hiring of a new library director. Um, and um, I'm hoping that we get to meet her soon. I've seen her on, on Zoom. And she seems full of energy and full of life and somebody is very enthusiastic about her job. The library is not fully open yet. They're hoping to open the children's room very soon. And they need another two hundred thousand dollars to complete the project. And not that I mean to, uh, to beat anybody over the head, but I sent in my check on Friday. Um, not for the full two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I met this afternoon at four o'clock with the Civil War Monument uh, Task Force. They are really doing their job. They've done a wonderful job of historical reconstruction. Um, and uh, they are ready to go back to, uh, to the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission and come to us with a report. If not, within the six months, darn close to that. Um, uh, today we were talking about the typography of the new tablet and the mechanics of getting it done and who's going to do it and how you, um, how, how you put an RFP out. And I talked, I was telling him how to, that they need to get in touch with the town's, you know, uh, procurement people because the amount of money that's involved and they have to go through that whole process. Um, and they're getting prices now for replacing the existing tablet and also for doing a reconstruction uh and a repair and cleaning of the Civil War Monument, not quite along the scale of the Melvin Memorial. But that's the kind of thing that they were thinking about is that, that could be could be refurbished and be made into a showpiece. And we were optimistic enough to talk about uh, on what public occasion it would be rededicated, whether it be Memorial Day, Veterans Day, um, you know, Patriots' Day or whatever the day might be, uh, that we can get it finished and get it dedicated. And that's, I think that's all I can remember.
Henry, I just had a question. Did they talk at all about possibly submitting a um request to CPC for that restoration? Or they didn't, you're not that far in the discussion?
They did talk about it. I think the one, um, one remark that was made is that they thought they might not, they might not be, they might not be ready. Either they might not be ready or they might have already gotten all the money they need by the October first deadline for the CPC application. So it's been mentioned, um, but my experience is sometimes, well, uh, they're, they're going to look at all the options and that's certainly, that's a possibility. They're, they're going to be looking, I, you know, for, well, I guess I shouldn't say, but they, you know, it, they're, they're thinking now about what the costs are going to be. And actually, I think that the replacement of the um bronze plaque itself will be less than the cost of refurbishing the monument.
So the applications for CPC um are due in August or early September. So it's been, it depends on the year. So.
Cycle, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I, my hope would be, my hope would be by the time we get to that date, whatever it is, they will have raised all the money they need to do the job. Because if they have to go through the CPC, it's going to add, you know, probably almost a year to the process going through the approval and the funding. And one of the things I did not realize about the CPC until I had to actually get funded by it for the Veterans Memorial was they don't give you the money in advance to do the job. They reimburse you after you have spent it, and which means you need the cash upfront. So if you don't have the cash to do the job, the, um, the CPC is not going to help you much.
Uh, Terry, I forgot my other committee that I was supposed to report on was four o'clock today. It was the Personnel Study Task Force. They um discussed, different members are going to talk to different town departments. And they talked about a letter that's going out and they just, they suggested sending it to all employees, not just non-union employees. And um, yeah, that's about it. Thank you. Sorry for that omission.
Okay, Matt.
Well, uh, I don't really have much to report other than at the Climate Action Advisory Board, they were electing a new chair. That was actually kind of a bumpy process. The, and then uh, at the Municipal Light Board, I wasn't able to attend, but just that there was the rate hearing, um, as well as the operating forecast for this coming year presented there. Uh, that was on the twenty ninth of December in the afternoon. So not much to report. Of course, I also attended the Thorough Depot Forum that had such a huge attendance. Um, and, and then of course, our special town meeting here.
Right, okay. And um, I attended those as well. And also the Hugh Carville, their annual fundraising effort is going very well. Uh, the school committee will be submitting a capital article. We'll hear about this on Saturday for paving and lighting the school access road. It does not include the parking lot, only paving and lighting. And they went out of their way several times to say that they've had tremendous help from CPW, which has saved a huge amount of money on the design work.
Is this for the high school, Terry?
Yes, the high school. Okay, so that's it with liaison reports. And we now go to committee nominations. We don't have any, and committee appointments.
So move to approve the appointment of Frank G. Feely of three forty seven Lexington Road to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term set to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, and then we have miscellaneous correspondence. We do not have any in this packet. And at this time, we can take public comment. I know that Pamela Jewett has been having her hand up a few times. Pamela, you, thank you for your patience if you want to speak. Um, or we can wait a minute and go to Carlin Reed.
Okay, Carlin Reed, eighty-three Wits End. This is going back to the OPEB Trust Fund uh, warrant article. And I wanted to give my support to this approach. Sounds like it's a similar approach or similar to what's being done with the independent advisor currently advising the um, the town's retirement board. Now, I watch those meetings and I find that those financial updates and forecasts by the independent advisor to be both useful and informative to the committee's work and to the public's general understanding of how the committee is supposed to be doing its job and what the financial conditions are. I encourage you to watch those meetings if you have a chance because you'll see the value for that particular advisor. I would also request that if town meeting does approve this OPEB Trust Advisor uh, warrant article, that the advisor offers periodic updates and advice to the trustees of town donation committee meetings itself, not just to the treasurer, but to the committee itself, um, as is currently done with the retirement board. So that's my encouragement and thank you for this. That's it.
Good question. Thank you, Carlin. Uh, Diane Proctor.
Thank you, Terry. Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. Two quick announcements. On January sixth of this, this coming week, Thursday, from four to five thirty, we're having a standout supported by Concord Indivisible, uh, the First Parish and all sorts of other organizations, both in Concord and beyond, uh, to try to, to celebrate and shine a beacon on democracy that is fragile right now and central to our vitality um as a country. Uh, we are, be standing on the very land in which democracies, you know, was first struck. So come and plant your feet with us, wear masks, bring bright lights um to shine them on both the speakers. Uh, Senator Barrett will be speaking, uh, so will Senator um. Jamie Eldridge and Tammy Gouveia is sending us a a comment to read in support of all of this. Please join us. Um, and then on this coming Friday, Kari Maitari will be presenting for our first Friday for the League of Men Voters uh from nine thirty until eleven, and this is an opportunity for people who are trying to figure out where where they vote on January twentieth. You know, what has been the, what is the districting, what's happened? Uh, how do you figure out where you're supposed to vote? How was all of this formulated? And Kari is gonna give us background and information on all of that. So I would urge all citizens to join us if they can. The easiest way to do this is to go to the League of Men Voters website for Concord and Carlisle, and you can sign up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Pamela Dret, thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you. Pamela Dret, thirteen Concord Green. Two quick questions. One is I appreciated the uh, information about the the town's investment funds and the things that we're doing for that, but do we have a rule that we don't invest in fossil fuels? I, i.e. the standard sunrise movement divest from fossil fuels in all town funds and investments?
Yes, we do.
Yay. Also, does Invision Concord, which I haven't read carefully, but I've I've scanned, it doesn't seem to include any of the recently passed sustainability principle type things, such as all-electric new building. Uh, and and shouldn't it?
I I think that, I'll just step in here and say that that was a similar impression that our climate-oriented boards and committees had when they reviewed the plan in preparation for, you know, the review we did a few weeks ago. Um, but I think that we also have had since then our climate action plan, and that in some respects sort of supersedes, you know, what's in my mind, what what's in that comprehensive long-range plan for that area. Uh, I think that the comprehensive long-range plan's long suit is in, you know, land and space planning and and uses. Um, and it's, it's a much shorter suit when it comes to sustainability, and and I think that you you do see our climate action plan really making up for that to a great degree.
And only one more quick question. If one wanted to bring a proposal to town meeting, uh, where would I go to find out about the rules about doing that? I'm thinking that we need a requirement for all school buses to be non-fossil fuel. All new school buses should be electric.
So the place to start would be to talk to Carmen Reese, the moderator, and she'll help you work through the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. I think we're ready now for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane. I think we don't need his assent. Uh, and myself, Mr. Johnson, I. We have a majority.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Night, thanks.
Saturday.